Number twenty-eight, please silence your phones. Is Pastor Tim Burnham here by any chance? Seeing that he's not, Larry, would you lead the invocation and let's stand for the pledge also?
Father, we're grateful for today and for this time you've given us to be together. Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be of service to you and to the citizens of our community in our county. Thank you for those that have joined us today to be a part of this process. God, we pray for our commissioners as they seek wisdom and strength and guidance to do and save the things that will be in the distances of our county and be pleasing to you. We ask it, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We want to, um, yes.
I don't, I know I talk loud enough, but I don't have a microphone.
We want to recognize Alex Alford. Thank you for being here. Appreciate the good job you do. Uh, did we have any, uh, you see anyone else? Audi Ryle with the Sheriff's Office, thank you for coming.
Sammy Sanchez.
Sammy Sanchez, always good pleasure to see you. Call the meeting to order. The first order of business is reorganization of the board.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I would like to nominate Commissioner Chapman to be the chair.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Um, any other discussion? Discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Election of Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to nominate Commissioner Anderson as Vice Chair.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
I was fixing to pass the gavel to second. Uh, we have a motion, second, any discussion? Discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Do we have any additions and deletions?
No deletion, Madam Chair. Under the consent agenda, item number ten, uh, the request to approve the transfer of thirty-four hundred and eighty dollars from other contractual services to rentals and leases to provide funding needed to rent a storage unit to store publications and promotional items. That was a request from the TDC. Uh, we've determined there may be other less expensive options, and so before we ask our action on this item, we would like to explore those options, so we'll bring a recommendation back in the near future.
Okay. Do we have approval of the agenda with a dish, with a deletion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Public comments, this is the time that if you can't stay for, when your, uh, when your agenda, when the agenda item comes up, you may come up now. If you come up, please state your name, spell your last name, and tell me the item that you're speaking to. Any public comments now? We'll have another time at the end of the meeting. Seeing none? Uh, any items removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none? All, uh, all in favor of the consent agenda? Or we need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I believe Commissioner Chapman's next.
Yes, Madam Chair, I acknowledge in my conflict of interest on the Waste Management EAL, I have filed a necessary form with the clerk and will abstain from the vote.
Do we have a motion to approve the EALs?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion second. Uh, any other discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Jones.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Uh, first item for your consideration is the approval of the two thousand eighteen BCC holiday schedule. Um, there was some information in your packet regarding, um, potential of, of, of consideration of two, um, schedules. One, um, uh, was dealing with the clerk, the clerk and the court's schedule, but in consultation with Mr. Alford, he is, um, would like us to continue with the current schedule and, uh, use the same dates that we've used previously. Uh, so your, your motion would be to approve the, if you so choose, the eighteenth, uh, BCC two thousand eighteen holiday schedule that reflects the same holidays that we celebrated in two thousand and seventeen.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is, uh, for your consideration are the com- commission board and committee assignments. We presented to you at the last meeting, those assignments as they currently stand. Um, today we request, um, that those of you that, uh, wish to stay on the boards and committees don't, let that be known. If you wish to change, let that be known, and then, then to come to some consensus as to who's going to serve where.
Okay. I'm, I'm satisfied with mine. You let's go around the Commissioner Chapman, are you fine with yours?
I'm fine with mine. I think there needs to be one addition to mine. It's the FCF. FCF is the Florida County's foundation. Uh, also set on that board too.
Okay, we'll get that added.
Commissioner Anderson?
I'm fine.
Commissioner Depper?
Good.
Commissioner Commander?
Good.
Okay.
Man, y'all make that easy, thank you.
Do we have, I'm giving out some of mine, so. Do we have a motion to accept the committee assignments?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Next item for your consideration is discussion regarding the naming of the new sports park that's currently under construction in Santa Rosa Beach. What you have in your packet is our, is a resolution and our policy regarding the naming of, uh, facilities. Um, I would suggest that as opposed to us trying to name the facility today or get deep into that discussion, that we review the current policy and perhaps at the next meeting, uh, decide whether there's any changes you'd like to make to that policy, uh, before we move forward with selecting a name. We haven't reviewed it in quite some time. Um, I think when, when I look and see that I signed it as chair, it's been some time since the policy was enacted. So I think it would be prudent to review it, uh, and then let's, uh, have that discussion at the next meeting if there's some changes we want to make, uh, then let's get those codified before we move forward trying to name the park.
And if we have so, I know, I know a constituent gave me a name already, to give it to you?
Sure.
Okay. All right. All right. Is that okay with everyone?
Um. Next item is, uh, request to approve the advertising bids for the record storage building. Uh, we began this process, but we need to get it formalized. This would be the facility that we would utilize to relocate the records that are in the old bank building if we so choose to move forward with, uh, selling and liquidating that facility. So we should, we'd hope to have this back in the next, uh, at least for the next two meetings, then we'll make a, uh, firm decision on what to do with the bank building and what to do without building a facility to replace those. So this just allows us to go out and request bids for that facility.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Question from Commissioner Jones. If we found a piece of property to put this structure on?
We're thinking of, we're thinking of the parcel between the, uh, just east of our legal office, the lot that's there. Um, and quite frankly, we, we've thought about tying it in with legal because there's, the synergies are there, and it makes them a lot easier and more efficient if it was closer, uh, proximity to one another.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you, Commissioners. In the not-too-distant past, we approved a new personnel policy. As we review that policy, we find things that may need to be added. One of the things that we found that was omitted in the updated policy was our longstanding policy of allowing employees to carry over, um, two hundred and forty hours or not to exceed two hundred and forty hours of annual leave each year. Um, that's been policy for many, many years. We'd like to see it continue and think it'd be prudent for it to continue, but that specific language was omitted from the current policy, so we're requesting and recommending that we amend the current policy to add the language, uh, that reads under benefits, maximum annual leave accumulation shall not exceed two hundred and forty hours at the end of the calendar year on December thirty-first. Unused annual leave above two hundred and forty hours will be forfeited by the employee at the end of the calendar year. Pardon me. Part of the reason we think it's important to go ahead and get this, uh, included in the manuals, this is the time when folks would typically burn off or use up those excess hours of leave, so that would be our recommendation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion?
Do I have a discussion? Is it possible, um, or do you, you feel like at the bottom of the page we need to put, um, for example, that this is the change as of a certain date so that we know, instead of printing out the entire book?
Yes, ma'am.
Like the bottom would say, as of one November two thousand seventeen, change one, or something like that? Just so that people, so that our employees know of the changes of any of this. Normally in, uh, in the manuals I use, it's redlined and then it's approved, but it's just some way to indicate that there's been a change.
Okay.
So people know, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
I'll make my motion to include that.
Okay.
Thank you.
On a second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, any discuss, yes ma'am, come on up. State your names, spell your last name.
Linda Morris, M-O-R-S-E. I was actually going to wait to do this under public, uh, public comments, but since you're talking about policies for employees, I'd like to know when y'all stopped doing, um, background checks on employees that you hire. Um, I think that there's a problem that could have been avoided if you had done a background check on Mr. Walters, who was a convicted felon and spent three years in prison. So I'm just curious as to when you stopped doing that, and I also know that prior to the sheriff taking over Walton County Fire Rescue, um, background checks were not done on fire personnel or EMTs. You know, these people come into our homes when we're at our most vulnerable, and the fact that you're not doing background checks on these guys, and then later our houses get robbed or whatever happens, something's wrong.
Are you finished?
Are you going to answer me?
No. Are you finished?
I ask a question, I'd like an answer. When did you stop doing background checks on potential hires?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, I'm not aware that we stopped that, but we'd be glad to look and see if, um, make sure we are continuing in accordance with the policy.
Well, if you did a background check on Mr. Walters, you would have known that he was a convicted felon and you wouldn't have hired him. So obviously there wasn't a background check done.
Okay.
Are you finished?
How many others are going to fall through the cracks?
Anyone else?
Mom.
Yes.
Larry, I would like for you, um, because I, I think that's a, a tough thing here. Um, is it in our policy that we don't hire someone that's been in jail?
I'll review that and get back with you.
Because, I mean, to me, and, and I'll use this for example, I've just spent the last week working with prisoners. Um, oh, thank you. I, I, you know, I know they have done something wrong, but when they get out of jail, if they can't get a job, then they're going to be right back in jail. So to me, it's kind of like, how do we, how do we help these people so that they don't go back into jail, but then protect the public at the same time? I think that's a, maybe a broader question, you know? Because I mean, I, I swear to you, every man I worked with this past week, you know, they were polite, they were respectful, they did their job, they went out of the way to help. Of course, they're on the release program, so we know that they're the cream of the, the cream of the crop, if, you know, I'm saying. But if they don't get some way to support their family, then they're going to be back right where they are now. So how do we, I'd love to know how we make all that work, and maybe a discussion with the Sheriff's Department or something, but you know.
And in our defense, Ms. Morris, I actually went through the budget, the, our most recent budget, and I did actually see four background checks that were charged to our, one of our accounts. I'm not, I just happened to buzz through and did see the word background check. So who's doing them, I'm not exactly sure, it's just not something I, I thought about, but I did see background checks in our, in our budget.
Uh, Ms. Morris, if you want to speak, you have to come to the podium.
So I, I'm just saying, I, like I said, I just happened to see background checks in four of them.
And, and I appreciate that, I really do. The problem is convicted felons, convicted felon, and convicted of robbery. And then he steals from the county? Actually, he stole from the taxpayers. That's a problem.
And, and to reiterate what Commissioner Commander said, that was very good. The sheriff has a wonderful program to rehabilitate.
Yeah.
Um, the, the prisoners, and you know, I, I, I understand what Ms. Morris is saying, but you know what, there is a second chance and there's grace. So some people, when they get in prison, they realize that they want to do better, and I think they should be afforded the opportunity, I'm not saying with us, but somewhere in this world, there's jobs, so, okay.
Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I would like, uh, to direct staff to look at our hiring process. There should be a minimum, minimal amount of background. Now, each job that we have or position that we have in the county, there's different levels of, um, security, I believe you could call it. And depending on what this person is applying for, you obviously wouldn't have, if we're looking at a county attorney and have somebody put in there for mail fraud or something else like that. But there is an understanding, I would think, that if we have people that have been to jail, and it's been eight, ten, twelve years ago, whatever it may be, and there's no reoccurrence or reoffending during that time that they may be applying for a job, then they might get a, uh, more consideration than a guy that just got out six months ago for robbery. Um, I know at the sheriff's office, we've, we really had to change, back in, when I first started out, that didn't make any difference, that if you had on a record, you weren't going to get hired by the sheriff's office, no, whether it was a misdemeanor or felony. But over time, things change, people change, uh, and so we really had a hard time filling vacancies because they may have had a, a conviction of, a marijuana conviction, misdemeanor conviction, uh, five years before, and it would preclude them from being applying for the sheriff's office in any capacity, whether it's a sworn or non-sworn position. So we probably ought to look at that to see what level to go. There should be a minimum FCIC, NCIC check on anybody that is applying it for this county. And then depending on the position, we delve deeper into the background to find out what else may be there.
Okay. Thank you. I'll get back to the, to the original motion. Could you restate the motion? Was it you, Commissioner Anderson? Did we vote on this? I can't remember.
No, we just directing, directing.
Uh, yeah, directing staff to put in the two hundred and forty rollover?
No, we, we voted on, we made that motion.
Your motion's second.
But we haven't voted, have we, Dory?
All right, now, all, now, all, we kind of got off track. Now, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign. Okay, public works, number twenty-five.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The next request is to approve and authorize the chair to sign a site access agreement with the Florida Department of Environmental Protection for the petroleum cleanup of the Bay Grove Park. If you recall, uh, on the Bay Grove Park property that, uh, the county purchased, there was an old filling station that had underground storage tanks, that was a cleanup site for FDEP, uh, and they are, that is a ongoing process. This agreement will allow them access to do what they need to do to continue that cleanup process there on the site.
Also, that was part of the deal that we deducted the amount.
That's correct.
From the price of the property, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, second, any other discussion? Discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Next item is a request to approve a resolution authorizing the chair to sign the State of Florida Department of Transportation State-funded Grant Agreement for the County Road two eighty A Connector Project. Uh, if you recall, this is the roadway that will connect three thirty-one, um, to the west of two eighty, and, uh, it's being funded to date entirely through legislative appropriation. We have all indication that, that funding will continue through the completion of the project. Uh, this will allow us to receive the one point five million dollar grant, uh, to be utilized for the design permitting of phase one of the construction.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion as second, any other discussion? Discussion from the audience? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am.
It is.
Coy Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. Uh, yeah, why is this road necessary?
We, I would suggest that anytime we have the opportunity to build a new road, um, that we should take advantage of it, especially when it's being funded, uh, with, with non- ad liborum dollars and non-necessarily local dollars, um, so it's an opportunity to build a road that's not there now. It also provides the opportunity for some economic development, um, areas, and will promote some growth that we believe will be in the best benefit of the county.
Okay, well, there's nothing there, that's forest. You're not supposed to be cutting a road through the forest.
It's private property.
Private property.
The property's be, that right away is being donated by the landowner.
And who is the landowner?
Diane Pickett.
Sorry?
Diane Pickett.
Diane Pickett.
Been in her family for years and years.
Um, I just don't see why there needs to be a road there, it's, it's unnecessary. Uh, uh, I don't see why there really needs to be any more roads at all, because the more roads you put down, the less absorption ground there is, and Florida needs as much absorption ground as it can get. So, uh, I think it's ridiculous. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, one of the major factors is there again is evacuation. It's a, is, is going to be a prime evacuation route?
Yes, I mean, even come, uh, even on Sunday, the traffic was backed up to Rock Hill Road, uh, going down to church and then coming back, it was still backed up. So even off-season, we're still having, we, so I see a need for it, so. Ms. Bowman, did you have something else?
Um, yeah, evacuation for, what, a hurricane?
Yeah.
Um, okay, well, when a hurricane's coming, you know, everybody leaves early, and the few people that live here stay here, so, um, there really won't, I mean, this, this left-right corridor, uh, that, that's not an evacuation route, it's an excuse to cut down trees and not pay taxes on it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. Anyone else?
Can we have a motion to approve yet?
Yes, we have.
Oh, okay.
We have a motion and a second.
And we have a second.
I wasn't really paying attention. Where is the road going?
It'll parallel I-ten, ju- south of I-ten from three thirty-one to County Road two eighty.
Okay, this is not South Walton, this is.
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. That approval was for the resolution allowing the chair to sign the contract.
Yes.
The next item is a request to approve the chairman to sign the State of Florida Transportation, uh, State-funded Grant Agreement for County Road two eighty A Connector Project. Same project, same dollars, you just, your previous action said the chair has authorized a resolution to sign this agreement. This allows, is granting the chair the authority to sign it on behalf of the board.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, second, any other discussion? Discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign.
Next item is a request to approve and to advertise for RFQ for engineering services for the two eighty A Connector Road upon notice to proceed from the FDOT. Uh, this request, um, will, once we get a notice to proceed from the Department of Transportation based on the previous funding agreement, we need to, uh, bring on engineering, um, services for the project. Because of the size and the dollar amount involved in the project, we're precluded from using our continuing service contracts for the project. Uh, it's in, when a project is in excess of two million dollars, uh, the way, then we have to go out for bid, and when the engineering services are in excess of two hundred thousand dollars, we have to put that out for, um, competitively award that as well. So this would move us through that procedure. Um, so if you're so inclined to move forward, the, um, the motion would be to, um, allow staff to issue an RFQ for engineering services for the two eighty A project.
So moved.
Have a motion, we have a second?
Second, but I, I want to add something. Uh, we're, uh, we're going to have to dredge out that basin. Chance, is Chance here?
My basin.
That little boat slip.
Too big.
This is on the ocean. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
We're not, we're not quite there yet.
But don't go far.
Yeah, this is one I'm talking about.
Stand in the corner.
You've got to head. Oh, I'm sorry, I got to head a bit, Chance, just stay right there.
Do we have a second on the RFQ?
Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Um, any other discussion? Discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign.
Now, along with that brings another question.
This is what I want to talk about.
Maybe not quite yet, but, um, as you know, in the past, when we do an RFQ for engineering services, uh, in particular, but in general, um, those are, once those, um, packages are in for review, either staff or the board of county commissioners, you guys sit as that review panel. Just to get ahead of the game, um, you know, we would ask whether you want to sit as that panel or you want staff to bring you a recommendation back.
I prefer the staff bring back the recommendation.
I do too.
Okay, any other comments?
Well, I bet you it's always felt like that was part of my job, they can bring us, you know, maybe like three and let us review those three, as we've done in the past.
Do we have a motion to, um, one way or the other, so we can discuss?
I don't have a problem with staff bringing back three motions, so I'm, uh, or however many, you know, rank the ones you want or whatever, but I, uh, I don't have a problem with that, if, if that's what.
How many?
Two or three, however many.
Would it, could I recommend that your motion read, let's staff review them and bring back those that are closely grouped at the top?
Right.
If there's two, three, or four, but if there's a space between three, four, five, and six, that we stop at three. If that gaps at four, that we stop at four.
Yeah, that, that'll be my motion.
Okay.
We have a second?
Second.
Motion second, any other discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, like sign.
Now, on to next. You know.
Yeah, we're talking about.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's some things I want to, Chance, will you come up?
The beautiful property at the bay.
Yeah, and, and the reason I want Chance to explain some things to you, there's some stuff we need to get started on right away, if I'm not mistaken, right, Chance?
That's correct. Um, there's several items here on the, on the agenda that we're, you know, seeking direction from you guys on. Um, probably, to, to look at the, at the, at the property there, uh, the boat basin is probably something that's most important. Um, I know to, that we felt, uh, I hope it's important to everybody else, but we'd like to go ahead and, and, and get direction from, from the board to, to, to move forward with design permitting, engineering on the boat basin to get that reestablished. Regardless of what we do on the property and how it's developed, feel like that's something that's very important that needs to be done. We could go ahead and start that task now. And then, there has been a conceptual plan that staff has put together for the park. I know that there's been some input from other design professionals in the community that would like to have some input in it, so maybe a workshop or a couple of workshops would be best for the actual site design of the project, but just wanted to get y'all's direction on how we need to move forward with it.
Madam Chair. I was shown the conceptual plan yesterday concerning the park. And the way I'm looking at that particular, that one there that's on the screen right now, I think. Yeah, that's it. It's probably going to be a two-phase process. One would be the eastern side from the boat ramp to the east of 331, and then the other one is the boat parking and subsequently the little inlet there and the mouth to the particular, out to the bay. That's where it's going to get bogged down, is in there because of the permitting with DEP and the Corps and everybody else in the world. So that is probably a minimum of a year.
Yes, sir.
I figured it'd take at least a year if they're consistent. So I would suggest that we take what we got here preliminarily, and I know you've, we've had somebody from a architectural firm send in something which, and I'll just make it known right now, it's too busy, it's too much down there in that particular area. Public-private partnership of some sort. So I'm thinking we ought to at least, if we're going to start right here with this particular thing, let's go ahead and have a couple of public hearings at Freeport, and then we'll get the input from those that's going to use it, primarily be those people north of the bay. Maybe a few come up from the south, but I don't see why they would. In fact, they got their own ramp down there. But at least move forward with our public hearings or workshops, whatever you want to call them, to get some ideas from the public. One thing that we noticed, if you've been to that property, especially since they cleared it off, and there are a lot of beautiful shade trees in there, those heritage oaks that are in there. And your plan, as I was shown, you've taken that into consideration to minimize the impact to the existing trees, try to build around or wherever. So maybe we take this preliminary, at least move forward, allowing them to move forward with getting the permitting and all that done, and then set it up for some public hearings at Freeport.
And I would just add that if we have, if we're, when we're going to put the fence up, let's have parking established before we put the fence up, because I know they drive in now and park, so we don't want to do, we want to, you know, have the, we want to have some parking established before we put a fence to fence them out.
Okay.
Or fence people out.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
If anybody's driven by there, especially late in the afternoon, it is just so beautiful, it takes my breath away. And as a lot of people point out to us, and they point to that seal up there, and it says preservation and conservation, this is an area that I think we should keep as simple, as close to nature as we can get it. We have a lot of parks in this county, you know, that have ball fields and ball this and even under the fishing pier, you know, there's concrete and all that stuff. This is an opportunity to showcase how beautiful the bay can be. So for my two cents, I would like for us to keep it as simply beautiful as possible.
Any other comments?
Yes, I want to try and make it known now to the board and anybody listening out here. I know there's been some discussions trying to have an access to this area off of 331. You're coming down a major highway, 55 mile an hour, and there's no turn lane in there. It's going to cause a problem with somebody having a bad wreck there. So my suggestion is that we go from the northeast corner of this property all the way to the southeast part of this property, fence it along there and provide those accesses coming in off of Bay Grove Road. There's two up near, one for the boat launch, one for the park area for safety. We don't want some small child slips away from their parents and runs out on the 331. So we provide that safety barrier, if you will, between the park and a high-speed highway.
Was your first part a motion?
Do you want a motion?
Yeah. Well, we just, we're seeking direction. Do we need a motion?
There's one motion that I would probably suggest as we move into public workshops, and that would be tentative approval of this site plan, so that as we go, we can say the board has reviewed this and they like what they saw here, but if there's things you see that will improve it, we'll be glad to take that back to the BCC. That'll keep the workshops a little more, I don't want to say under control, but...
Focused.
Focused, there you go, great word. And I think that's what we want to come away from, are there small changes that we can make that would make kind of the overall design better without just redesigning the whole thing? So I would like perhaps a motion, or for you to consider a motion, that would tentatively approve this and to review input that's brought back from the workshops.
Okay, I'll make your motion that we tentatively approve, or the preliminary drawing as presented, and direct staff to set up at least two workshops for the public in the Freeport area for discussion on this particular park. And part of that motion is to allow staff to move forward with doing whatever permitting and design work they need for those water areas that are there along with the boat ramp.
I second, and that was my concern, was we need to get started as quickly as possible on the dredging permitting part of it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, and then I would just add, when the workshops are done, get ideas for naming the park.
Okay.
Get some ideas from the public. Any other discussion? Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Very well, thank you, Commissioners. Chance, or public works folks, anything else there you think we need in order to continue moving forward? You think we're good? Next item is a request to approve Amendment Number Three to the Agreement for Services on Highway 98, Median Landscaping, for the 2014, extending the current contract to December 31, 2017. Just brief word of explanation there, the original contract was for two years with two one-year options. The second of those one-year options, it was contemplated in the contract, would expire on December 31 of this year. When the option was approved by the board, it was, I believe it was in November of last year, and it only extended it through November of this year. So this amendment will basically go back and implement what was contemplated in the original agreement, was that the contract would run through December 31 of 2017. We're also asking to approve the advertisement bid for the landscaping services in the median and along the right-of-way of US 98 at the west end of 38 and McVie Road. Just to be clear, this is the current median landscaping that begins at the west end of 38 and runs down towards Sacred Heart. The new agreement will include that as well, but also the mowing on the north and south right-of-ways of that same area. So your motion would include amending the current agreement and going out for bids on that area of right-of-way to be mowed and maintained.
So moved.
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Discussion from the audience?
Oh, Coy Bowman, B-O-W-M-A-N. Yeah, is this the same company that planted the trees in the middle of 331 in front of the South Courthouse Annex?
Don't believe so.
If not.
Because I have to say that that's the most ridiculous planting of trees I've ever seen in my life. It's dangerous, it blocks the view, there's unnecessary rings of concrete planted around these trees. I don't know why a tree needs a ring of concrete around it. And then also the irrigation system that's been put in either doesn't work, it waters midday, which is the wrong time, and then there's like a water truck that comes and pumps out a bunch of water. So why is there a water truck if there's an irrigation system and then the water truck shoots the water at the trees, missing the trees, watering the road? There's like 10 magnolias planted within 30 feet of each other, and when I called Bay Landscaping, they said that Dusty Moss at FDOT told them where to put the trees. The palms right there at the intersection of 331 and 98 block the view of the left-turning traffic going north onto 98. And twice I've seen northbound traffic end up in the southbound lane, like heading towards southbound traffic dead on, because the palm trees that have been planted there block the view of the northbound lane. So people turning north onto 98 actually are turning into the southbound lane because they can't see the road on the other side. So like there's a huge problem here with the planting of these trees. I mean, you can't plant 10 magnolias within 30 feet of each other. They're big, messy trees. I don't see why they were planted in the middle of the road. It's the wrong kind of tree to be planted on a median. And so why are you planning on putting more trees in more medians when you've got such a horrible problem with the way that you've already planted trees?
If you'll give me just a moment, I'll try to explain. We're not planting any additional trees in the right-of-way, it's what's already there. This is a contract to maintain it and to keep it looking in a pristine state.
Okay.
As far as the 331 landscaping, that is a Department of Transportation project, from the construction, from where the trees are planted, to what trees are planted, and now to the maintaining of that. If you've got some comments you would like to make to them, we'll be glad to provide you with the individual there that...
Dusty Moss.
That you should get in contact with.
Yeah.
But at this point, the Board of County Commissioners of North of County has any rights nor responsibility to what's going on in that right-of-way.
Okay, so I should go ask somebody else? Okay, well, anyways...
We'll be glad to help you, you know, find who that is and get you to the right place if you'd like.
Okay, well, in order for them to do it, at some point, you had to approve it, and what you've done is extremely dangerous, unnecessary, and damaging to the environment. Thank you.
Ms. Bowman, no. We didn't have to approve it.
You didn't have to approve them planting trees down the middle of the road?
That's a state and federal highway. We don't have any say in what they plant there. Mr. Jones said he would give you the information you needed to contact the person.
Okay.
And you're welcome to do that.
Okay, so you had no say in it?
No.
All right.
Okay, we have, any other discussion? Any other discussion? We'll wait just a second for Commissioner Commander to get back so she can vote. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? He's already establishing his chairman duties. Sorry, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Thank you, Commissioners. The next item is a request to award invitation to bid 017-030 for the Helen McColl Park Improvements to C.W. Roberts, and that award would be contingent upon exploring cost-saving measures, utilizing value engineering. If you recall, when we made the award to C.W. Roberts on the sports park, we took opportunity prior to contract to value engineer a number of items, generated savings in excess of $1 million. We don't anticipate saving that much money here, but we would like the opportunity that if you would award to C.W. Roberts, that it'd be contingent upon us bringing you a contract back, and in that contract, the ability to have worked with them to value engineer those areas that we can to bring savings back to the board.
I'd like to pass the gavel, and I'll make a motion we approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Passing the bag.
Just trying to get you in practice, TDC. Mr. Tusa.
I didn't recognize him.
Now, does all that come off after this month? I'm just teasing.
I don't know, I think I'm going to keep it for a while. I think I'm going to clean it up a little bit, because I haven't shaved it a month, but...
It'll be off by summer, I guarantee you.
That's for sure. Anyway, just wanted to give some updates this morning regarding the parking proposal that will be coming before you at the next meeting on the 12th. Structured Parking Solutions has been conducting some workshops. They had one on November 1st, which was actually the same date as the Triumph Workshop. So it was a little bit of a conflict, so we scheduled another workshop, which is scheduled for this evening at 5:00 at the Annex. And then we also have two more workshops. We thought we'd go outside the bounds of South Walton and have one in Freeport and in the Funiac as well. So those meeting dates are December 5th here at the courthouse for the first workshop outside of South Walton, and the second one is December 6th, and that will be at the Blount House in Freeport. We also discussed this at the Destination Improvement Committee, it was presented there, and then we'll be discussing it next week at the TDC meeting as well. So we feel it's very important that we get the word out to the residents of Walton County of what's going on with this parking proposal. And so I will say that the turnout has not been good thus far, and so that's why we're really trying to promote this. We put some ads in the paper, and then we also put it in public notice. It's been posted around town and some social media sites as well. So we're trying to get the word out there so people will come and participate in this public forum. And then we also had a survey out there, and it's a website called SouthWaltonParking.com. And so people can go there and give their feedback on parking. There's some questions there. And so far, we've received 362 responses to that survey. So I'm actually quite impressed, actually, with that number. So anyway, just wanted to give you an update on that. Like I said, Structured Parking Solutions will be presenting their plan to you at the next meeting down south. So that's about all I have right now for updates. Is there any questions for me?
Did we ever get an opinion from, that, you know, like if we have a hurricane and we can't pay the fees each month, each year, is the TDC able to pay those fees? Did we ever get an opinion on that? That was the one concern I had, is like if we have a storm or an oil spill or something, we can't pay those fees with the parking program?
Uh-huh. That's something we can negotiate as part of a contract if the board decides to enter into a contract with the parking company.
Okay, any other questions? Concerns?
Pleasure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the people are still coming, so whatever you're doing on shoulder season's working.
Yeah, I have to say, I drove down 38 last Wednesday, and I mean, it looked like spring break. I mean, Rosemary Beach and Seaside, I mean, they were just packed with people. So, you know, it's nice to see people coming here. Outlet Mall obviously was crowded for the holiday. So it's good to see people here spending their dollars supporting our economy.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Norris?
We actually have a public hearing next, Commissioner Jones.
Oh, never mind. Back up to public hearing. I need a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is sent, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is open.
Madam Chair, the purpose for this public hearing is for you to request, and we recommend you approve, a resolution electing to use the uniform method of collecting non-admirable special assessments levied within the county, stating a need for such levy, providing for the mailing of the resolution, and providing for an effective date. This is an annual resolution that you are required to pass if you intend to utilize MSBUs or MSTUs in the coming year. We do this every year, and every year we try to make sure that we're clear that this does not establish a tax, it doesn't promote a tax, it simply is the enabling mechanism to continue forward with MSBUs that are currently in place, and gives you the ability or the public the ability, in the instance of where they would request one, to begin a new special taxing district in the coming year. So that is the request, and again, it's simply an enabling mechanism to move forward utilizing non-admirable special assessments if you so choose.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
Public comments? Have a motion to close the public hearing? Right?
Okay, so moved.
Don't confuse me.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Now we need a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. Commissioners, I have two items. Item number 34 is a presentation of the draft Beach Activities Ordinance, and it says, "Request Approval to Hold a Public Hearing on December 12, 2017 at 3:00 PM." But you guys at your last board meeting actually went ahead and gave us the authorization to hold that public meeting. So really, I'm just presenting the draft to you here today because our policy requires that. I will meet with each of you individually before December 12 so we can go over the ordinance in detail and I can obtain your comments. This is just a draft, this is not a final draft. It can be changed and modified before December 12, and just because something's in this draft doesn't mean that's what the board will ultimately adopt at the public hearing. So I'm merely just presenting you with the draft here today and confirming that you would still like to have that public workshop on December 12 at 3:00 PM at the South Walton Annex.
I do.
Okay. Yes, a public hearing and a special meeting.
Yes.
Okay, so no formal action is required by the board at this time. Commissioners, item number 35 is a request to approve and authorize the chairwoman to sign a retainer agreement with Konstanti Brooks. to sign a retainer agreement with Kostangie Brooks Smith &amp; Prophet for outside labor and employment council, and also a request to approve invoices from Kostangie Brooks Smith &amp; Prophet for services provided to Walton County. Your agenda says, uh, from May 30th, but it's actually May 1st, 2015 to present. In your agenda packet, you have the new, um, contract with Kostangie Brooks, and then you also have, um, approximately fourteen invoices from May 1st of 2015. I can provide you a little bit more detail if you'd like. The original contract with Kostangie Brooks was entered into by the board in 2013. That contract, um, was set to expire in May 1st, 2015. It had two options to renew the contracts, but those were not brought back to the board in 2015 or 2016. The EALs have been paid and were approved by this board through the EAL process. I, I don't have any concern about the payment of those, those invoices because they were approved through the EAL process, but in an abundance of caution, I would ask the board now to go back and approve those invoices. And we could handle this item either as one motion or two separate motions if you'd like. It, it would be a motion to approve the new contracts and approve those invoices, or a separate motion to approve the new contract and a separate motion to approve those invoices, however you want to handle it.
I'd prefer two, two motions.
All right, I make a mo, motion, we approve the first one.
Okay, approve the con, new contract.
Have a second, motion, second, any other discussion? Any discussion from the audience? This is on approv, improving, approving the contract.
Um, my name is Jen Sullivan, that's J.E.N.S.U.L.L.I.V.A.N. I, I'd like to talk for just a second. I know I only have a couple minutes, uh, about the contract. Let me just start by saying, this is just another example of Walton County's problem with transparency and fiscal responsibility. You have an HR director, or had, and a county attorney, yet, um, the county is being asked to expend taxpayer funds to contract with both an outside law firm to conduct the work of both an HR director and a county attorney. And let me walk you briefly through a, a timeline, timeline to highlight the transparency problem with the Kostangie contract. Last month, uh, as mo, most of you know, two of my clients, uh, filed complaints with the county, um, with the county administrator regarding one of the county commissioner's actions. Uh, on October 11th, Walton County Attorney retained the Kostangie firm directly to handle the investigation of the complaint. Now, with respect to.
Sullivan, I, I'm sorry to interrupt you, and we can stop the clock, but we're, we're not going to discuss.
I'm not getting into the details of my client's complaint. What I'm here to talk about is the Kostangie contract. That's before the board. On October 11th, the Walton County Attorney retain, retained the Kostangie firm directly to handle the investigation of the first complaint. On October twenty-four, uh, twenty-fifth, excuse me, the Walton County referred the investigation of the second complaint to the Kostangie firm and was told to just call, not send emails. On October 27th, two days later, I requested a copy of all contracts that Walton County and the Kostangie law firm had to handle these complaints. And three days later, on October 30th, the county attorney produced a contract that expired in May of 2015, acknowledging that Walton County had no active contract with the law firm to represent Walton County on HR matters, but assured me that, that Kostangie's being paid by Walton County's, um, insurer for the investigation. On November 2nd, I requested directly from Kostangie, uh, a confirmation whether it was hired by this board or the county's insurer. It's close to my heart, since I've spent the majority of my career doing insurance defense work. Um, I requested a copy of the contract, the scope of representation letter, or an other written arrangement with the insurer, and on November 6th, Kostangie responded, refusing to answer any of my questions, but sent me two documents, which were helpful. One was an email from the county attorney dated October 11th confirming that she retained the Kostangie firm directly. Um, to, today, it appears that you've been asked to approve a new four-year contract with Kostangie and several invoices from many employee complaints dating back to 2015. I, I have a few questions for you before you vote on that. One, why is the county expending taxpayer funds to hire outside vendors for HR and the legal department when presumably it has in-house people to do that? Why or how did the county not appreciate within the last two and a half years that it didn't have a contract with Kostangie until I brought it to, uh, the county's attention? And finally, shouldn't there have been some public discussion or debate and vote before those funds were expended? It sounds like from the county attorney, they were approved through the EAL, as I heard earlier. And has the county been paying Kostangie a retainer fee of $600 a month for thirty months since the county had a contract, which, I'm not great at math, but if I do the calculations, that's $18,000 in retainer fees? Is this what you're doing now, just a retroactive, um, a retroactive ability to attempt to fix something that wasn't done right the first time? I, I just believe, um, and I didn't file a sunshine suit over this, although I think I had a pretty good basis for it. What I, what I really would like from this board is some transparency. I think the Walton County public, certainly the media, but the Walton County employees and the members and residents of this county demand transparency, public accountability, and quite frankly, some fiscal responsibility. Thank you for your time.
Well, there was a, a lot in there for me to address. I'm happy to address any or all of it if you guys want me to. So, I, I should've taken notes. Again, I do not think that there is an issue with the approval of, or with the payment of these invoices from 2015 onward. And in abundance of caution, I'm asking for you guys to go back and retroactively approve them. They were properly approved and paid by the board through the EAL process. But, again, in abundance of caution, I'm asking you to go back and approve them now. Um, as far as a new contract with Kostangie Brooks, we, we've retained outside legal counsel to represent us in HR matters well before 2013, and, um, going forward, we retain outside legal counsel to represent us in a lot of different matters. In this particular case, it makes sense to have outside legal counsel because there may be times that I, I or someone in my office can't, um, impartially advise, uh, the commission on, on what they need to do on employment matters. There could be an employment matter where, you know, something with me comes up, so you would need outside counsel in those cases. Um, and I think Ms. Sullivan is under the impression that she brought it to my attention that the contract had expired. That, that's not accurate. Once I realized the contract had expired, and once I got a new invoice from Kostangie Brooks dated November 13th, 2017, I realized I needed to bring this to the board for your action, and that's what I'm doing. And I, I'm trying to be as transparent as possible by bringing it before you. And just to reiterate, I know I've told Ms. Sullivan this. I believe that, uh, the attorneys at Kostangie Brooks have also told her this, but the investigation of the employee complaints have been paid by our insurer, facts. None, none of those, um, bills will be paid by the county.
And I believe that the employees asked for an independent investigation, and that's what they got.
Yes, ma'am.
Excuse me? Okay, we have a motion to, any other discussion before we move on? We're, we're just talking about approving the contract.
Okay.
Any, any other discussion on approving the contract? Seeing none, all in favor of approving the contract, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign. Four to zero. Okay, now, we're talking about the invoices.
I make a motion, we approve the invoices.
I apologize, I'm, I was gonna say something, I'm trying to form my words.
Can we have a motion and a second, then I'll let you form your words.
Second.
Okay, motion, second, now, go ahead.
So, Sydney, you feel comfortable that if it was an expired contract and we paid the bills, that that's not... Please, run me through that again, please.
Uh, obviously, best practice would be for us to bring back an extension. So, whenever the contract expired in May 2015, best practice would have been for us to bring the contract back to the board to get approval and extend the contract. And unfortunately, that didn't happen in this case. However, all of the invoices were properly approved by the BCC through the EAL process, so I do think that they were properly paid. But, because we didn't follow those best practices back in 2015, I'm asking the board to now, and to be as transparent as possible, to now go back and approve those formally. And there's two invoices in here that have been sent by Kostangie Brooks that have not yet been paid by the clerk's office that I'm also asking you to pay.
Can I stop you?
Yes, ma'am.
Mother, I was here, I have to vote. My vote was yes. Sorry. Yes, five oh. Okay, now, we're talking about the new contracts again.
And, and I guess, um, to address, so, uh, my office has taken steps to address this not happening again in the future. And, and this is an unusual situation because these invoices were, were signed by several different people and several different departments, um, but my office is doing everything possible to make sure that something like this doesn't happen in the future. And we actually keep a running tally of all the contracts that expire in a year, but we started doing that in late 2015, and because this contract is from 2013, it slipped through the cracks, but we will make sure that doesn't happen again.
Okay, any other discussion? Discussion from the audience on the invoices. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like sign.
Nay.
Four to one.
Thank you, Commissioners. I don't have anything else.
Thank you. Commissioner Tony Anderson?
Uh, yes, I would, uh, request to appoint Michael Harbin to the vacant-at-large seat on the planning commission, uh, unless there's been a late one to apply. I think he's the only one that has applied.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Discussion from the audience? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Commissioner Sarah Kilmander? Commissioner Melanie Nipper?
Yes, um, as many of you know, I've been, uh, trying to do the best I can for the citizens of basically the entire county, but especially the north end of the county, um, with housing needs, uh, jobs, economic growth, um, and many of you know that the property that our office is on, District 3's office, is actually a county-owned parcel, and I would like to ask the board if they would be willing to move, uh, forward with the conversations regarding, um, workforce housing, veterans' needs, and, uh, start moving on a plan for those 140 acres, including hopefully some, um, light industrial or maybe some businesses there that will support the north end like FedEx does. Is that your motion? I make a motion that requesting to move forward on the 140 acres of development.
When you say move forward, you mean like public meetings and discussion?
Absolutely, public meetings, discussions, um.
The Commissioner's been working very closely with staff on how we pull some of these things together, and, um, so, uh, you know, there's certainly some good efforts moving forward, and I don't want to put words in our mouth, but as we have discussed, just wants to be sure that the board is in tune with what's going on, and, you know, either through unanimous consent or a vote to say, proceed and carry on, and when you have something to bring back to us for our action, bring it back for our consideration.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure this is at the public hearing stage or public. I mean, I know Commissioner Nipper has been talking about this, but I've seen, you know, no conceptual plans, no, you know, nothing, nothing. I would suggest that, that, you know, you continue to, to do this, but, uh, you know, do we need to have public hearings now, or do we need to wait until you start getting more information and, and?
I wanted to do it properly, so I'll defer to either DeeDee or Larry at their suggestion of the stages, because they were helping me with the steps, and if you could, uh, fill in the proper steps.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't anticipate any public meetings to review anything until it was brought back to the board for your consideration to say, yes, let's move it forward. And in, in discussions with the Commissioner, and again, not trying to put words in the mouth, but to make sure we, we get things moving, is just simply to say, this is where, kind of what we're looking at, and if that's the wrong path, that the board, majority of you say, no, don't do that, we're not interested, then, you know, put the brakes on and look at something else.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, we've got a lot of issues here. We've got funding issues, you know?
Sure, yeah, and all those won't be addressed, you know, at one time.
Okay.
And I, I would like to bring, um, maybe at the next meeting, because there are, we do seem to have some interest in this. People seem to be excited of where it's located. It's Upland, there's a lot of good, good things about it that we've spoken with people about. I'd like to maybe bring, um, next time in RFP for the development, just a conceptual idea, and everyone say, that's too much, too little, porch is too hot, too cold. It just, we, I think we need to move our county forward on the north end to progress with housing needs. The south end is just, it looks perfect for, uh, a small business, another, I mean, you could see what FedEx and Loves did for us. So, if we could, that, that's, that's my idea.
And I would add that the Commissioner's done a great job of bringing the stakeholders together, from the housing folks to the veterans' folks to the development folks, not in a way to, um, compromise anyone's position, but how do we all work together to move things forward? I know that, um, you know, Tom Baker links here, Tom's working very close on, how, how do you move housing initiative forward? Looking out and who's done similar projects that we could get some ideas from. So, um, my understanding of the Commissioner's request is just to make you aware of what's, you know, where she is, what she's been working on, and ask basically your blessing to continue that process until it's time to bring something back to the board for your consideration.
Do we need a motion for that?
I think unanimous consent is fine. So, with four of the head nods, I think you got what you need, Commissioner, move forward.
Do we have any comments from the audience?
And if anyone is, um, I would love for anyone, if you have concerns, to please call me, or Mr. Baker is so aware of our housing needs, and most of you that have grown up near Mossy Head are familiar with our needs especially. I mean, even, even in the south needs affordable housing, workforce housing.
Hi, Bonnie, is this on Bonnie McQuiston, M.C.Q.U.I.S.T.O.N.? I would just like to ask, first of all, why did the county purchase this land? What was its original purpose, 140 acres? What was the purpose?
I can tell you, um, back when we acquired the property in Mossy Head for where the industrial park is, this was part of that exchange. Uh, we actually bought property in Liberty County and exchanged it with the Department of, um, US Forestry Department in, I believe in 2002, and we ideally wanted the property in Mossy Head, but what they wanted in Liberty County for us to buy was more than what they had in Mossy Head, so they included this property in that exchange. There, there, it really has not had any... It, it was always included in the industrial property that we got in that exchange, as far as any development plans or what to use it for. In my time, it's never gotten into any real high-level discussion.
Okay, well, it concerns me to hear workforce housing. The county would build workforce hous, the county would get into the housing business?
Nope.
Well, it seems to me that we need to look very carefully at where, you know, if, if I remember the tax rolls, about one-tenth of adlorm taxes come from north of the bay, and I think a lot of that may be Freeport, but if we, it seems that if we need any more, if you have any more affordable housing in that area, it would have to be free. I mean, that is where we have affordable housing in that particular part of this county, and I don't think that the county needs to get into, be very careful. We get into building, housing, thinking that we need to provide this, uh, what does that mean for infrastructure? What does that mean for long-term maintenance? Does that mean a county department to monitor that? Be very cautious when we start talking about the county getting involved in this kind of thing.
The county is getting involved in the concept. We will not be in the housing business. We will not be in the housing business.
Well, I thought I heard you say workforce housing.
Workforce housing, to, in my mind, sometimes the words are difficult to explain, means someone who can afford a home that works here, someone who drives nails on the south end, someone who works in the south end but really can't afford to move out of maybe their parents' home.
So, okay, so this is be, this would not be any subsidized housing?
Not all of it would be subsidized.
Not, what did you say?
Not all of it would be subsidized.
But some would be subsidized?
Just like we have subsidized housing in the north and south end right now.
And you, and so we need to look at what is there now that is affordable, uh, and why we would need to do this? And you're talking about transporting people to the south end and, you know, there, there are more questions than answers at this point. Thank you.
That's exactly why we're opening up the discussion. Thank you, Bonnie.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak to this?
Tom, would you, would you like to speak to it at all regarding our housing need?
And Ms. Nipper, as he's coming up, I want him to fully recognize what colors I'm wearing today.
I, I, I actually, uh, took this off so there would not be any disturbance today with, with Auburn. But, uh, I, I, I'm Tom Baker with the Housing Director here in Walton County, and, uh, some, some good questions about.
I agree.
Uh, what, what we face in, in Walton County as far as housing, as far as housing for people who, uh, are, 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 are working in, in. in, in low-income jobs. You mean just hold a second? Okay, that's fine. Uh, I, I'm involved in, in the subsidy-type housing in Walton County, and that's not what we're trying to expand here. What we're trying to do, uh, with this property, with, with Ms. Nipper here, is to take a look at some properties such as we did at, in Mossy Head, to, to, to utilize it in a way that, that might bring entrepreneurs in here that might become involved in building houses that are affordable for the workers in South Walton and, and then the North Walton area to be able to afford. Uh, if you talk to real estate people in our area, they have a lot of requests for housing around a hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that they're just not here. Uh, if, if we make it attractive for these entrepreneurs to take a look at th- this property that we have there, that they may want to come here and begin the process of building homes that they can make a profit on, and we can, we can then see people who have a real hard time paying light bills, uh, water bills for their food, to be able to look at being able to afford a home in our county. It, it's not that we want to enlarge the Section Eight program here in any way, but as we, as Ms. Nipper spoke, we have the Arbuthnot Shoemaker, which we have twenty-something families living there. It just happens that when, when a housing comes available like that, someone may want to rent one to someone or whatever, so that would just be a byproduct of it, but I can tell you that we're not wanting to, to request HUD to put more housing in here for, for Section Eight housing or whatever, but to make it attractive for someone to come in and actually begin the process of building some homes that people can afford in this part of the county. That, that's kind of where we are. And, and again, in the exploratory nature, to, to, to look at the possibilities, 'cause, 'cause this is brand-new. And, uh, and so, it, it's not as big a problem today as it will be here in years to come if we don't address this and get some action with people starting to build workforce housing in our area. And that's what I'm concerned about, is we're all, we'll be in five years if we don't begin some construction process. It's not us to begin it, but to make it attractive for someone to take a look at the north part of the county.
And, and I totally agree with Mr. Baker. We, we want new businesses to come in, but we have to have the housing. I mean, if we had a, 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 a big company that wanted to come in right now, we don't have the housing for them. So I, I, you know, I commend you for looking at this. I don't think the government, I agree with Ms. McQuiston.
I agree.
But, but I thank you that we need to start dialogue, and I appreciate you taking the lead in that.
There, there's two things. It's housing and internet capabilities, and Rick will, Rick knows that. Those were what businesses are asking for. We don't have the housing, we're hopefully moving as a county, and I know Rick is working very hard with, uh, internet abilities for large businesses that are, uh, global.
Actually, Com- Commissioner Kilmander take, took the lead on the broadband, and, and so we've got two really good projects going, and I certainly appreciate y'all taking the initiative in that.
And, and we need to remind people, this is the only place we can sit and discuss this.
Yeah.
So, and that's basically, thank you, I'm, I commend you for bringing it to us. Okay, you're in the preliminary, but you're letting us know what you're, you're working towards, which we all need to do. Say, we're working on this project or that project?
The hard part for me, and for many of us, and, and Bonnie included, is the word affordable and workforce have a bad stigma.
Yeah.
And that's what I'm trying to get away from. What I really want to do is just grow this county and let people that live in this county work in this county, grow up here, and stay here. That's, that's, that's what, when I campaigned, that's what was missing. Um, that's the part that's, that's not here yet, that we can, we can massage, I think.
Any other comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Let's see.
Coy Bowman, B O W M A N. Um, okay, so I just looked up this parcel of land, and it says that you got it for a hundred dollars, and you had said something about it was part of another deal with Liberty County. Okay, and then, uh, on the actual deed, it says that this is, um, underneath the nineteen twenty-two statute four, forty-two six, four, six-five. And if you look that up, it says that this statute, uh, references forest reserves. So you see, this piece of land was only given, uh, in this deal you talked about, uh, as part of preserve, preserving forests, meaning that you can cut those trees down, but you have to plant more trees back there because our nation needs trees. Um, so you can't build anything on it. It's part of the, uh, federal naval agricultural timberland silviculture. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Ms. Commissioner Nipper. Uh, Vice Chair Bill Chapman?
I don't know.
Or Chair? Okay, and, uh, the only thing I wanted to just give the board a, a briefing on is that we, I have a group of people from South Walton that have come to me and want, uh, us to help them start a community garden, which I think's a great idea, and they'll be coming to present their project to the board, uh, but just wanted you to know that they, I had met with them, and that a community garden is going to come forth in South Walton, which will be fantastic.
Uh, Chair, Madam Chair, I'm meeting with them Wednesday, so...
Okay. All right. Thank you. Anything else? Uh, citizen requests? We didn't have any public comments? Do we have any public comments today? Yes, ma'am, come on up.
Morning, Commissioners. Uh, Melissa Ward for Dunlap and Chipman, and I apologize that I did it at this section of the phase, but you were, um, Sidney brought up the, um... Beach Activities Ordinance? Beach Activities Ordinance. And I was requested to be here today on behalf of some, uh, some or very many of the Sea Haunts, uh, residents, and specifically, I know you're going to be presenting the ordinance in the future, but there are some of the issues, and I wonder if I could just mention one or two at the moment. Um, one of them is that the erosion control line, which defines, and this is, um, uh, under one of the new sections, uh, in the ordinance, presently, the Sea Haunts community has the ability to say, if a vendor wants to come in, they can tell them, no, we don't want you right in front of where we are. And, um, the revision to the language, uh, it seems sort of innocuous and says, well, according to statute, it's from the E C, from the, um, erosion control line and, um, C-word, which sounds fine, except that the erosion control line is only established from Topsail over to the west. So the eastern properties along the beach will no longer have the ability to say to vendors or to the county, we don't want vendors right in front of us. And, uh, that's just one of the issues that we wanted to look at and see if that's something that was intentional, where, where, where taking that, that has been provided to them? I'm sorry? I intended that with the language, yes. Okay, so, um, in particular, and I thought that was, you know, specifically, it's in the, uh, we had an email from Sidney saying, you will not be able to do that any further. So there... And that's if the board adopts those changes. If the board adopts those changes. So we just want to make sure that we discuss those things. Um, and the other is, um, it had to do with the process for the vendors, and I'm, I was talking to Brian Kellenberger earlier, and I think, and, uh, I think he does, I think they're doing a great job. First of all, I think that everybody is working towards the same goal, which is we don't want to stop people from making money on, and, 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 uh, we don't want to stop small businesses, and we don't want to stop people from enjoying the beach by having a chair to sit in. But you cannot help but understand that if a person who is, um, there in their home, and there are, um, six rows of chairs in front of their beach, and nobody's using them all day long, they're just sitting there, or if there's some method for, um, they go in, somebody goes out there and they put some stuff down on the beach, they go take a swim, they come back and their stuff has been moved back fifteen feet because a vendor came out and put their stuff in, in that place. Now, I mean, I'm sure that's changing as people get educated and as better vendors set up and do a better job, but we'd like to see if there's a possibility of looking at that as well, maybe not in ordinance, but some information that you continue to educate the people to say, you get a right, you have a right to come out here and put your chairs out here, but you don't have a right to bump us out of the way because you got here at six o'clock in the morning. So, um, I just, those are some things that we wanted to talk about and get up, and I didn't know if y'all were going to have a workshop on it, or it was just going to simply be an ordinance and two hearings, you know, sort of thing.
We're only required to have one hearing?
I'm sorry, ordinance, one hearing. So that hearing is December the twelfth?
Yes, at three P.M. at the South Walton Annex. And we, we will fully discuss the, the proposed changes in detail, including D eight.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Melissa. Anyone else?
Coy Bowman, B O W M A N. I did have one more question for you. Uh, did, did you all hear that the B C C of Bay County is being indicted by the federal government for conspiracy?
Really?
Didn't hear that.
No comment, huh? Yeah.
We really, we really aren't responsible for Bay County, but...
Oh, yes, because the Tri-County Council of Okaloosa-Walton and Bay is actually the energy company of Saint Joe. You were commandeered in the sixties. Uh, you've been destroying Florida and, uh, the United States of America. So you guys are going to be indicted next, along with, uh, Okaloosa, and, um, you will no longer, uh, be in control of anything anymore. So, thank you. I hope you have a nice time in jail.
Thank you, Ms. Bowman. We, we kind of like orange anyway. Um, so what do we do now? Just, do we have any other comments?
We'll take a break.
We'll take a ten-minute break? Ten-minute break. Commissioner Chapman?
Ma'am.
Your own?
I'm on?
Your own?
Okay. Commissioner Jones?
Yes, sir.
Could you join me up front?
One thing I want to accomplish is chairs, to get these cut off.
Commissioner Jones, uh, want to thank you on behalf of the board for your leadership during this past year. I know, like you said, you're glad it is over with. Uh, but anyway, we appreciate your efforts, we appreciate what you did for us out here, and we want to present to you this plaque. It says, presented Cecilia Jones, District Two, 2017, Chairwoman, Walton County, Board of County officials.
Thank you. It's been my pleasure, and I will not be sorry that I don't have to sign my name a hundred times a week. It seemed like, so... Thank you very much. Thank you all.
And Chair, um, and she come back up, I, um, something that, that we actually failed to do, and I just realized when Rick was taking...
Sorry, when Rick was taking the picture, that I think as a board, I would like for us to send out our condolences to Louis on the, the death of his father.
Yes.
And let him know that our, our prayers and our thoughts and love are with him.
Yes, absolutely.
Absolutely.
And his sister as well, yeah, she worked for H.R.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that. Okay, we are moving on now to the planning and development. Mr. Carpenter?
Good morning, Commissioners. Matt Carpenter for the Plane Department, C A R P E N T E R. Uh, we've got three items on today's agenda. First is a legislative item. Um, this is a request to adopt by ordinance an amendment to sections thirteen oh two oh oh, thirteen oh three oh oh, and thirteen oh four oh oh with the Walton County Land Development Code. Uh, establishing a process for regulating farmers' markets as temporary uses within the Walton County scenic corridors, providing for conflict, severability, codification, and an effective date. Uh, and this was scheduled for a first reading today. Um, Vivian is here to make a presentation. I understand there may be, uh, a request to possibly give us a little bit more time to work on this.
Yes, I, I, uh, Com- uh, Madam Chair, I would, I would like to maybe postpone this for a little bit and meet with staff. I have some questions, uh, and maybe we could bring it up at a later date. But I have some questions I'd like to sit down with, uh, Mike and Vivian and, and talk about.
Commissioner, I certainly think we have time to accommodate that. Uh, we're, we would like to get this implemented prior to the spring growing season when the farmer's crops start coming in, uh, but I don't think it's under any real pressure to move it forward today. Um, so perhaps in the next couple of weeks, we can, um, should we...
I'm sorry.
That's all right. She, you got a lot going on, we understand. Should we move this to a date certain?
Uh, should we do that, Mac, instead of re-advertising?
It's advertised for a first reading today. If we wanted to continue it to a date certain, I think that would be, uh, consistent with our advertising.
Okay.
I do, I have some questions as well when I look at the hours, it's like...
Could we do it the, the meeting here in January? Do we know what date that is?
I do, I, I do.
We don't have twenty-eight...
January the ninth.
January the ninth?
South end or up here?
Up here.
Do it up here.
Well, that would be January the twenty-third.
Does that work?
It worked for me.
January twenty-third for first reading? We'll continue to that date.
Make a motion to, do we need a motion?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Make a motion that this be, uh, moved to the twenty-third of January two thousand eighteen.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Uh, the next two items are quasi-judicial. Number three, we have a request to continue from the applicant, uh, to December twelfth.
Let's deal with the, uh, prob- prob- prominent space four. Is a request to continue, do I have a motion to continue to December twelfth?
So moved, second.
Have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioners. Um, that leaves us with the Galea Estates Plat, and this are...
All right. Uh, anyone who anticipates testifying on item number thirty-nine, if you would stand and raise your right hand, do you swear or affirm the testimony you will provide to this board will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Whenever you come forward, just state your name and state that you've been sworn in. Have any of the Commissioners had any ex parte communications on item number thirty-nine?
No.
No.
Okay, seeing none, we're ready to proceed.
Thank you. Uh, this is the Galea Estates Plat. It's a request to approve by, uh, final plat. Uh, this is a five-lot subdivision, uh, proposed on just under one-point-four acres and a future land use of low-density residential. Uh, the proj- project's approximately one-third mile north of the intersection of U.S. ninety-eight and West Hewitt Road, uh, east on Sierra Court. Um, this project was previously approved by Development Order, uh, on March third, 2015. Uh, they have completed the infrastructure. Um, the proportionate fair share amount of ten thousand two hundred and fifty dollars has been paid, a sidewalk buyout of twelve thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars has been paid. Uh, there's no preservation required on this particular, uh, development, and all that remains is the payment of the recording fees at the clerk, uh, subject to this board's approval.
Do we have any questions? Any questions? Any questions from the audience? Yes, ma'am, come up.
Coy Bowman, B O W M A N. Uh, this land is located south...
Excuse me, just a second, Ms. Bowman.
South of the bay.
Have you been sworn?
For this item, everyone who testifies needs to be sworn in.
Oh, I didn't know asking a question was testifying, but sure. I promise to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Okay, thank you.